Everyone, we're going to start, it is 7:04 PM. We're in the City of Castle Hill, September 3rd, 2019. Zoning Commission meeting at 7 o'clock PM. Castle Hill City Hall, City Council chambers, 209 Lemonwood Drive, Castle Hills, Texas, 78213. So we're calling this Castle Hill Zoning Commission meeting to order. We have determined that a quorum is present. Present are Commissioner Herman, Commissioner Booth, Commissioner Baker, and I'm Chairman Rodriguez. On the agenda tonight, item two, consider, excuse me, to consider approval of the August 6th, 2019 zoning meeting minutes. It is 7:05 PM. We will accept a motion if someone would like to bring one forward.
I do have a few, I think there's a correction that needs to be made. On page two of the minutes, under recommendations for short-term rentals, motion by, oh no, I'm sorry, I read that wrong. It's Herman and then Herndon, sorry, there were two H words. I goofed, nothing, I have no issues. I move we accept the minutes.
All in favor? All opposed? Alright, thank you. Commissioner Booth is with us tonight and want to give the same opportunity. Just from a standpoint of samples, to make things easy on folks. As an example, sometimes commissioners repeat the wording of the agenda item as an example. So these are strictly examples. I move to approve, I move to not approve, I move to take no action, I move to table to a particular date, time, et cetera. So just to help things, I know that sometimes folks would like to put together some sort of resolution, a little more language. It can be that simple, but it is the commissioner's decision to do so. Alright. It is now 7:07 PM. Item number three, public hearing and discussion on an application from the Wayside Chapel Evangelical Free Church for an amendment for a special use permit, SUP, granted on March 2011 to add property located at 113 Ivywood Circle. Legal description, CB 5007B, block three, lot three, to the property included under the SUP. Would like to open the public hearing. Please approach.
Mr. Chairman and members of the zoning commission, appreciate this opportunity to appear before you all for a second time. I am here making the same request for consideration of granting the amendment to the SUP as we have filed back in April of this year. And we are making this request again based on three stipulations. Number one, we are asking this request again according to the City of Castle Hill's Code of Ordinances, which makes allowance for us to make this request. And I cite Division 2A, Single Family District, Section 50-61, Use Regulations, Paragraph B, Item Number 5, which states that churches are allowed or acceptable for being granted an SUP in an A, Single Family District. Second of all, we are making this request based on the City Code of Ordinances, Section 50-500, Item Number B, where the decision needs to be made as long as the request for the SUP does not adversely affect traffic, public health, public utilities, public safety, and general welfare. Thirdly, we are making this request according to the Religious Land Use and Institutionalized Persons Act, a federal law designed to protect houses of worship from discrimination. And that act reads as follows, quote, "No government shall impose or implement a land-use regulation in a manner that opposes, imposes, a substantial burden on the religious exercise of a person, including a religious assembly or institution, unless the government demonstrates that imposition of the burden on that person, assembly, or institution, A, is in furtherance of a compelling government interest, and B, is the least restrictive means of furthering that compelling governmental interest." End quote. And lastly, we are making this request again based on the fact that on May 7th, this commission voted to approve a recommendation to the city council that this SUP be granted to Wayside Chapel as it has been filed. I would also like to add the fact that at the city council meeting last month, the city council voted to send it back to the zoning commission based on the comments of two council members. One was Mrs. Winger, who sent it back making the statement that, and I quote, "The zoning commission didn't know what they were doing." End quote. The second comment that was made on the part of Councilman Gregory was the concern for traffic on Ivywood Circle with the addition of this property. And I pointed out to council the fact that along Ivywood Circle, our City of Castle Hills, no parking signs in designated areas to keep the street open for the movement of emergency vehicles. This does not present a traffic hazard to Ivywood Circle. Thank you for your consideration.
Thank you. I also have on the list here a Frank Paul? Number five, sir, okay. Alright. Anybody else in the audience for this public hearing? Agenda item number three. One last time, anybody else? Agenda item number three. I will conclude and close here the public hearing. Item number three, approximately 7:14 PM. Agenda item number four. The time right now, it's approximately 7:14 PM. Discussion and possible action on a recommendation to city council on an application from the Wayside Chapel Evangelical Free Church for an amendment to a special use permit, SUP, granted on March 2011 to add property located at 113 Ivywood Circle. Legal description, CB 5007B, block three, lot three, to the property included under the SUP. Commission, this is your time for open discussion regards to this, and what I wanted to also begin with, you all received a volume of some documents. And the purpose of that is we are serving this community in a particular capacity as the zoning commission. And I know that we've had, although we've had brief time together a couple of months, I know there's been items of importance, and there's also been a volume of information that has been presented. So in the essence of, or in the matter of transparency, I wanted to make sure that you all had all of that information. Of the city manager, I just wanted to verify the Judge Royal Ferguson's documents of any sort, was that, I'm sorry, I thought he was there. I was inquiring about Judge Royal Ferguson's, any documents or opinions that he may have had? Did we get any of that at all, did the commission receive any of that? But from a standpoint of prior scenarios, as an example, this has to do with, I wouldn't say exactly a similar entity, but First Baptist Church versus City of Castle Hills? I sent that information. So anyway, in the essence of transparency, you're provided with a lot of information. Does anybody have any comments?
Chairman, as I indicated, that the packet obviously is about 500 pages, but it encompassed mainly the background, the ordinances, different boards that the Wayside might have gone to, potential violations in all permits that they have pulled over the years as well, so.
Aside from that, if I mentioned to the commission, I'm not sure if you happen to see the case worksheet that was provided hard copy in your packet? Those particular details? In addition to, aside from the scanned pages, the volume of scanned pages, the actual hard copy pieces? And I think you may have noticed multiple copies in this hard copy compilation in your packet in regards to ordinance number 1069 and 1111. I'm not sure if anybody has any questions or anything on those details, the addresses, what the differences were for the multiple copies of 1069 or 1111? Just thought I'd mention that. I know that city staff went to a lot of trouble to make sure that we had all the details that we needed.
And Chairman, just to clarify, everything that's backed up here was in the original packet on May 7th to the commission, which had the backup ordinances as well.
Any comments by anyone?
I have a question. What was the result of council sending back our vote? And did that nullify the first vote? And why is there a second application? I'm, it looks like the first one was voided, or I'm not acted upon in a timely manner, I don't know.
The council tabled consideration of the Wayside item at its May meeting. I believe tabled it at its June meeting. And at the, there was no July regular council meeting where this was on the agenda. That meeting could not be held for lack of a quorum at 6:30 on July 9th. And at the council meeting on August 13th, as Mr. Gordon stated, Ms. Winger made a motion to send it back to the zoning commission. The council has not decided one way or another in regard to the recommendation made by the prior zoning commission. The council has sent it back to this newly appointed zoning commission for another look. I can't speak to what was the reason for that action. I can only explain and state what my recollection is of what the action was.
So why was a whole new application filed?
This is not a whole new application. This is the same application that was filed back in April. And if you look at the case worksheet, it's the case worksheet dated May 7, 2019. And the backup material, Mr. Rapley can confirm, I believe the backup material is the same backup material that the zoning commission received for its May 7, 2019 meeting.
I don't recall that there was any language about religious land use in the first application.
It may not have been in the first application, Ms. Baker, but Mr. Gordon did mention it in his presentation on May 7th.
To council, yes, he did.
If I may add some more, Mr. City Manager, if I could, please. I noticed that in this resolution, and if I saw as an example in prior historical documents in the packet, hard copy packet for this evening, at the end it says, "This amendment to special use permit sets no precedent for other special use permits." Will that be added to this document that you just handed out?
Mr. Chairman, the, that sentence is in the draft ordinance that was presented to the city council as part of its May, June, and August meetings, and would be part of the ordinance that is presented as a result of this zoning commission's recommendation. If the commission would like to have that added to this resolution, it could certainly be penned into the resolution. I just put something together, not knowing which way the commission would go on this. Just wanted to put something together to give the zoning commission something to start with. And if you'll see, the last whereas paragraph simply says, "Whereas the zoning commission finds that," and y'all can fill in that blank. And then at the end of the resolved paragraph, it would be a place to fill in the blank as to whatever recommendation the commission wished to make.
Commissioner Booth, have you had a chance to go and answer any of this? I know.
I have, as well as driving by the property in question. And, you know, since I live so close by, I'm in the area quite often. And, you know, and I did notice the signs that the gentleman spoke of, as far as no parking. Unfortunately, a lot of people aren't obeying them. And so I was wondering if we could have the police department actually tow vehicles when they're in this area, because I am concerned about the safety of the area. You know, if there's emergency vehicles and they can't get by because somebody's illegally parking, if we could actually tow them.
And again, the reason I ask, Mr. Booth, thank you for being with us this evening, is commissioners, this is your time for open discussion. This is not the first time I do this, we've done it past meetings. I just want to make sure that you all have an opportunity to discuss anything at all. I mean, again, like I said, the math, from a standpoint of transparency.
Absolutely. Are we allowed to ask, Mr., would you like to be addressed as Pastor Gordon or Mr. Gordon? I don't want to be disrespectful, so I'm trying to, okay. Can I ask you some questions, if you don't mind?
Excuse me, Commissioner, I think City Manager had a comment.
Yes, Chairman, just to go back to Commissioner Baker, everything that was in the May 7th packet is completely the same in here. So there's no changes, it was the same packet information, same application on May 7th. Just to clarify.
Thank you.
Sure.
I've scrolled over 500 pages of data trying to figure out under what premise we would possibly be denying 113 on. I don't see any reason, we've approved 101, 102, 103, 104, 105, 107, 109, 111, 115, and 117. What is special about 113, in your opinion? And then, are you guys going to not stop until the entire area has been encompassed by Wayside? Or just an opinion really, or a comment would be nice?
No, that's fine. And we have, since we first applied for the SUP in 2010, this has been a long process. But we, yeah, we have, every time that we have come either before zoning or architectural review or city council, we have been totally upfront, above board, giving full disclosure. And as we have stated all along, Ivywood Circle, there are 12 properties on that street. And mind you, as you see in the packet, that Ivywood Circle is immediately adjacent to the main campus of the church. The church has been purchasing those residences, those properties, since 1999. And to date, with the addition of 113, the church now owns 11 of the 12 properties on that street. And, yeah, we have, all along, been, as we have done with other SUP applications, there's nothing really different about that property. I mean, it's just one of the other houses, buildings along that street. There's nothing particularly unique about it. And the use that we are seeking of that property is no different from the other properties that you cited.
Well, as I said, I don't, I mean, based on the information that I've read, I don't see any reason why council has kicked this back to us under what plausible reason we would have to deny 113 when we've approved or previous commissions have approved all of the other ones. Unless there was some kind of usage that was outside of the normal use for these types of buildings, y'all were going to be doing some kind of a, I don't know, business out of it or something to that effect? Or if there was a resident that was really vocal, that you said you own 11 of the 12, I'm assuming that there is a resident that is not part of Wayside that lives on that street?
As far as we, yes, yes.
Is he a vocal opponent of this, or? I haven't seen him come before commission, if you guys are aware of that, but, I mean, that would be.
That may be in your scanned documents?
I remember reading one, I don't remember the man's name, though, it's.
Okay. But he mentioned there were 12 properties.
There's 12 and they own 11.
And this is the 11th. I'm not sure if you've read what happens after, if you've seen any of the prior meetings or anything else, what happens after the acquisition of the 12th property? So.
That's why I was asking, is he planning on acquiring that 12th property? That was, yeah, mainly for that reason.
If that property owner would like to sell to us, we're willing to talk.
Happy to buy it, yeah, I'm sure, okay.
And can I make a comment to the chairman's comment? Is that in the SUP process, we have made full disclosure of a conceptual, long-term plan. Again, we are, we are not hiding anything under the table. We are being fully transparent and have nothing to hide. There's no, there's no ulterior or hidden motive here.
What are you going to use 113 for? I saw what it said, but is that accurate?
Yes.
Is there anything outside of that that we're not aware of, or?
No.
Okay.
I'm being as transparent.
No, no, I totally understand, I just wanted to, you know, ask you some direct questions about it, because I don't, again, I don't see why they're kicking it back to zoning.
Well, that's what we're, that's what we're wondering at this point, is why, why all this?
Yeah. If they hadn't approved all of the previous ones, I would see that it might, there might be some concern, you know, something outside that we're not seeing on the documentation here that would lead us to some other conclusion. But based on what I've seen, I would say I have no issues with it.
Yeah, Commissioner, to answer your question, if, and again, in the most respectful way, a lot of those details, there are zoning commissions that voted against, voted for in their recommendations through the years. I'm not going to cite those exactly, it's in the documentation that you provided. In this particular packet, after the addresses on the first, I think, instance of ordinance, or excuse me, second instance of ordinance number 1069, there's acknowledgements by Wayside Chapel of how some of the structures have been used in the past, et cetera, what they're doing, how they're doing it. But again, I don't want to paraphrase in any way. All that information is here for each commissioner to read. But as I mentioned, from a standpoint of transparency, and try and understand, it's been said many times on many topics, zoning commission, integrity of our neighborhoods. So I think that's, each commissioner, in what they do, what they interpret, how they're trying to help and serve, actually aids trying to maintain the integrity of the neighborhood by the different codes and ordinances and everything that we've been entrusted with from a standpoint of Texas Local Government Code and more. So anybody else have any questions or comments at this point? I know that it is a lot of information, a wealth of information. I know that we've handled situations in different ways, I'm not sure. I will ask point blank if every one of you has had a chance to, you feel, given a due diligence, you know, to move forward on it? Or it's your decision on what you feel you want to do? I want to do my best to facilitate this zoning commission. So I'm not sure if you have any more comments, Ms. Baker, at all, looked like you were.
I got through about half of the supplemental packet on the flash drive, whatever it was. And so I still have about half left. And when Pastor Gordon, I'm sorry, I didn't want, I agree, I don't want to get it wrong, originally presented his application, he was open and honest that their long-term conceptual plan is to turn all of those properties that are on Ivywood into a parking lot so that they can utilize the, I guess, more open space that's currently parking for more facilities. I hope I, I'm repeating that fairly accurately. So that's part of what you didn't have privy to the first time.
Well, I saw that, but it also says that there, as part of the resolution, they're going to have to apply for, to be able to do that. So that's going to be kind of another fight, you know? But just based on what we've been presented with, I, what they do in the future, I mean, I don't, they're going to have to come before council, it's ultimately going to have to be decided on as well. But, I mean, we've already approved all these other ones. How do we stop now? I mean, I don't really know the answer, I'm asking that more like as a.
Well, I voted against it because under Section 50-497B, and it was passed in 2000, it was a zoning change passed in 2017, unless I'm an idiot and not reading this correct, which is possible. All districts except A, in any district except A, and I believe this is residential zoned A property. The following use. The following uses may be requested for designation as special uses. But the key part is except A. And so this is a religious or philanthropic institution, and it's requesting an SUP. And as I read this section of the code passed in 2017, it should not be granted.
Mr. Schnall, can you give us any enlightenment on that? From a legal perspective?
Well...
Is she reading that accurately?
Well, the copy of section 50-497...
No, no, no.
The copy of 50-497, which Ms. Baker is referencing, does say what Ms. Baker says it reads. And it does say that it was ordinance 2017-09-12H, apparently adopted September 12, 2017, roughly two years ago. There's another section in the zoning code, the one that Mr. Gordon referenced. I think it was 50-61, and it's 50-61B5, specifically says churches are permitted in the A district. My view from a legal standpoint, and my opinion from a legal standpoint, is that the federal statute that Pastor Gordon referenced in his presentation would supersede both of these ordinances and would require that the zoning commission and the governing body, both, declare exactly what remarkable circumstance they find would preclude the use of this property the way this church is asking to use it. And that's a fairly high burden that the federal government has placed upon local communities. And so, you know, that to me is probably the most relevant legal point for the commission to consider. I think, Mr. Herman, I think your comments as well concerning historical activity involving this specific applicant and property in the same immediate area of this property is also a prudent way to look at this. And an argument could be made that because this is an amendment to a pre-existing special use permit, that even the amendment in 2017 wouldn't preclude an action of this kind. In any event, the zoning commission makes a recommendation to the governing body, and the governing body, the city council, is the one that has the authority to actually make a final decision on approval or disapproval of the request to add 113 Ivywood Circle to the SUP.
Yeah, Commissioner Herman, just to add to that. I'm not saying this scenario. I'm saying historically, in a variety of circumstances, there's been some, you know, intimidations in the past. There's been references to entities wanting to do things. One of the things that I asked our city manager about here earlier was a situation where specifically Judge Royal Ferguson, from a federal perspective, gave some documentations or opinions in regards to First Baptist Church versus City of Castle Hills. So I don't think anybody should ever, any board or commission or governing body, feel intimidated in any way. And as I mentioned before, this commission, in different circumstances, has voted for and has voted against. But the information that you have is, again, I'm sure you may be questioned by residents in this community about voting and what you researched and the transparency and a variety of things. But that is each commissioner or the commission as a whole, a combination. But, like I said, it's been both ways. But we, as a zoning commission, make recommendations to the city council. So if we're doing the best that we can with all of the information put together, what we are, as always, is putting forth a recommendation. Miss Commissioner Baker?
One of the things that I was reading when I was looking up religious land use, it was that the burden was also upon the applicant to establish how a denial was going to be an undue burden and not allowing them to use their property. I agree with Mr. Schnall, though, that we cannot undo the vote that was done. And so... But I do think everybody needs to have read all of the documents submitted. And if you feel you need more time, then now is the opportunity to suggest that we consider this at a later date.
I would move to vote on this if it were up to me, I think. I move that we vote.
Do I have a second? Do I have a second to that motion? Motion fails.
I move that we pass this application for consideration to the next zoning meeting.
Do I have a second?
I'll second.
All in favor? For Commissioner Booth, Baker, Rodriguez, against Commissioner Herman. Thank you. The time is approximately 7:41 PM. Item number, agenda item number five. And we'd like to open the public hearing on proposed amendments from the Zoning Review Committee regarding revisions to Chapter 50 of the Code of Ordinances. The discussion will include home occupations and short-term rentals. If I may, before we, well, this public hearing, I think we had Mr. Frank Paul. Welcome, sir. Thank you.
Thank you. Frank Paul, 112 Shalimar. First, let me say I appreciate the time to say something. I'm sure at least two of you, three of you, might wonder why I always come to all these different things. I learn a lot. And I wished I knew what I didn't know, but there's a whole lot more that I don't know. So that's why I come a lot of this. The reason I'm here is, I remember, and I may have missed, y'all correct me and stop me, I may have missed it when we had the discussion before on short-term rental versus, I always get the word hustles. And when I listened to the conversation that you had, I did not hear, and again, it may be just me, where you delineated. You delineated the two as opposed to, to me, they're all short-term rentals. And it seems like if you do something for A, it ought to be B also, so that encompasses the whole thing. Now, maybe y'all have corrected that. I was out of town, maybe at the last meeting, and if you did, thank you very much. The other comment I have is that I know at that same discussion, it was, well, we ought to have a list of what goes on, who's gonna do it, and who's gonna do that. And then the comment was made, well, the people who are already doing it wouldn't have to sign up. Well, I would think if we start something new, everybody would have to sign up, no matter if you've done it before or not. So I don't know why we would delineate between those two. If you're doing it, if we have an ordinance that starts today, then everybody needs to sign up based upon that. That's just my opinion. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Paul. Would anyone else? Anybody in the audience? This is item number five. It's approximately 7:44 PM. We're closing the public hearing on agenda item number five. Agenda item number six, still approximately 7:44 PM. Discussion and possible action on a recommendation to the city council on amendments to Chapter 50 of the Code of Ordinances based on recommendations from the Zoning Review Committee. Commissioners, this is your time for open discussion.
I would like to, I know it's not appropriate necessarily to respond to Mr. Paul, but I do appreciate you're here all the time, and I appreciate your coming and being involved and paying attention. I had the same kind of question about why were we not addressing hostels? But I think we did in the respect that we limited the number of people you could put per bedroom in our ordinance restriction. And I think that was how we were gonna try to get around calling out and excluding hostels categorically. I don't know, maybe somebody else might have some better recollection of what happened that evening. But that's what I recall.
And, Mr. Chairman, my notes indicate that the commission discussed simply excluding hostels from being eligible to be short-term rentals. I think in response to some concerns, either that had been communicated to the commission at prior meetings or concerns of commission members. But my notes simply say that the changes that the commission wanted to see in the draft short-term rental ordinance that Mr. Rapley had presented in August was to define hostels and then to eliminate hostels as a permitted short-term rental use.
Thank you, Mr. Schnall. Mr. Chairman, do you recollect?
I do recall that. Now, do you know if they're, just because we're excluding them from the eligibility for a short-term rental, is there wording that we can put in to where we can prohibit hostels in the City of Castle Hills as a separate ordinance?
There may already be language that could have the effect of limiting use of property as a hostel. I would have to look at the zoning ordinance to be sure, and I did not bring my copy with me. I thought I had, but I didn't. Some cities, and Castle Hills may be one of those cities, have provisions in their zoning code that talk about the number and limit the number of unrelated persons living in a single-family residence. And that's a kind of a way to deal with a hostel situation. That could certainly be something that the commission does. Unfortunately, because of the wording of this agenda item, that did not come from a zoning review committee recommendation. Short-term rentals did come from the zoning review committee. So the discussion this evening and action this evening should only be related to short-term rentals, and the commission can discuss a possible change in regard to hostels under the next item on your agenda or at a future meeting.
Okay.
I'm trying to look back at the last minutes also, too, to see where that may have been cited, because I think, Commissioner Herman, you provided a lot of input, and we really do appreciate it.
Sure, of course.
And, Mr. Herman and Chairman Rodriguez, I mean, that's, if you look at the second page of the minutes that y'all just approved a little after 7:00 this evening, the minutes say recommendations for short-term rentals were as follows. And the first bullet point is remove hostels from short-term rentals. And then there are about 6, 8, 10 other things that the commission had discussed about short-term rentals at the prior zoning commission meeting.
Commissioners did some solid work there. I thank you. Last meeting that we had. If I may ask, while we're discussing this right now, see if our city manager had any additional comments that he wanted to make. Ryan, did you, I think you said you had some comments maybe you wanted to make under this section?
Sorry, Jim. Sorry, someone's here. They're ringing the bell, so, sorry. I didn't know about you. Wanted to start with the home occupation or talk about the short-term ordinance right now. I have a copy of the draft ordinance and the application. Mr. Schnall, as in your packet, had done red lines to the home occupation. So it's up to the commission what you want to start with.
Okay. Were there any other, any other comments aside from that, that maybe feature?
But, I mean, there's, if we want to be able to capture that, we can. I could work with Mr. Schnall on that particular language. But any cities I've seen, their ordinances refer to the maximum occupancy or dwellings that limits people, as Mr. Schnall said. So by that, I think, removes the ability to have a hostel, which is multiple people. The only thing we can enforce is the square footage based on the number of people in a building itself right now, you know, square footage, based on occupancy. But we can definitely, we can definitely, and we could talk about, I know that the commission had wanted to style their sort of ordinance slash application after New Braunfels. And having a copy here of the New Braunfels one that the previous commission looked at, there's standards that discussed in the application that we can include that talk about occupancy and then decal, parking, life safety, conduct on premise. All those we can incorporate if we'd like as a city. But I think the occupancy covers what Mr. Herman's alluding to for the hostels.
Any other second thoughts on that, Commissioner Herman, at all, from what he's...
For instance, just I'll read you what it says here for New Braunfels.
Thank you.
It says, "The maximum number of persons allowed to reside in a short-term rental is two adult persons per sleeping area plus an additional four adults per residence." So I think that's a way to limit the hostels.
Yeah, yeah, I think that's the better way to do it.
Anyone else?
So as I mentioned, Chairman, we can go through this revised application. The application to ordinances capturing what was added or deleted based on the commission's input last month. And then, as we discussed the minutes and what Mr. Schnall captured here, we could go through this list as well. And then again, Mr. Schnall has redlined the home occupation, which was in the packet as well.
Where did we get on the hotel occupancy tax? Did you guys get anything written up on that yet?
That's an item for the city council, not the zoning commission.
Separate.
So, you know, assuming the zoning commission recommends the short-term rental ordinance, then contemporaneously with city council consideration of y'all's recommendations, we would have a hotel occupancy tax ordinance for council consideration.
That's why, you can see in the application, there's kind of a blank right now because we'd have to... I mean, excuse me, in the ordinance itself, it's because we don't have the hotel motel tax enacted by council.
Now, do we, I see it mentioned here that 1-17, as far as penalties? But I don't have that. It's hiding.
That's referencing under our code... That's referencing under our code of ordinance here. You want to take a copy? This is briefly.
I just briefly.
General penalties for our code of ordinance under Chapter 1-17.
Mr. Herman, were you talking about the penalty not being on the app? Is that, okay.
I just didn't see it here. It wasn't in my, the draft that I-
Okay, yeah, no, no, no. And will the application, they could just submit this, doesn't, or would it have to be notarized or just accept it, taken?
It would, if someone is just completing it, it's like any other permit, they would be considered application. One of the things I did add here in the permit application was sort of the checklist that was required, which I know that the commission asked for the deeds, so that would have to be provided. And then the site plan drawn, so I used the information about any requirements for off-street parking, size, height, construction material, location of building, those things that are pertinent to filling out the application, ensuring you have a checklist to complete it.
Should we change? Sorry, anybody?
No, no, go right ahead, Commissioner.
And I know there was a discussion about the fee itself, and I captured 250. I've looked at a couple other cities, including New Braunfels, and they do, to renew your short-term rental application for the annual inspection fee, it's 125. So if we're going with 250, I'd assume just half that permit cost for the next year.
For the renewal?
Yeah.
Yeah, I think that's a good idea. On the tenant notification sheet, should we change number three where it says comfortable enjoyment? Should we change it to quiet enjoyment? That's kind of a legal premise.
Could you repeat that one more time?
Sure. On the tenant notification sheet, under number three, noise, disorderly conduct or noise of such character, intensity, or duration that causes distress or interferes with the comfortable enjoyment, there's a legal premise, and Mr. Schnau, you might correct me if I'm not right on this, but I think there's a quiet enjoyment allows people to...
There is the term quiet enjoyment as a legal term, but it's generally construed to mean not quiet from noise, but quiet from interference with your right as an owner.
Yeah.
So that, it is a legal term of art, but it really doesn't talk about decibel, it's not really talking about decibel levels. So the wording can be, certainly can be changed, but the context of quiet enjoyment is typically something in a lease where the tenant is promised by the landlord that they will have quiet enjoyment, not interfered with by somebody else claiming a right to occupy, as opposed to a decibel level issue.
Would we maybe in parentheses cite just the number of our noise ordinance there next to that, just so that they're aware of it? Commissioners, any comment on that?
Yeah, I mean, well, that's, excuse me, number, number five there, it set forth in Chapter 26 of the code ordinances for noise.
Yeah, I mean, I think- I just didn't know if that would have encompassed more of a broader spectrum of interpretation,
The council about a year ago adopted a more stringent nuisance ordinance that might be something that could be referenced here as well. That was adopted in part to address a problem that was in existence at that time that has since resolved itself. But, but that ordinance, like the zoning, like the noise ordinance, you know, could be referenced in this ordinance as well, because it was a broader attempt to deal with a property that was being used in a way that was disruptive to the neighboring property owners. And I, Mr. Rapley indicated that might be Chapter 18. I frankly can't remember where that was, but it was an amendment to the nuisance ordinance.
I think we're getting pretty close though, guys.
I'm very pleased with all the work you've done, Mr. Rapley.
This looks really good.
Thank you.
I agree that, I don't know how everybody else feels about voting, but I would love to get this done.
Me too.
Well, I appreciate it, Ms. Baker, and I think though, there's some time to make sure that we're in line with other cities. I mean, we looked at New Braunfels, Fredericksburg, I even looked at Wimberly today because I was trying to find something that was orientated to our particular community to a certain extent. So I think there's other areas, if I have to look in similar sized cities, maybe in Dallas or Houston, maybe there's some research that we're missing, especially with occupancy, maybe parking, to make sure that you as a commissioner are comfortable with what's set before moving forward.
Well, it sounds like you're not as comfortable about moving forward.
No, 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 I'm just-
Okay. Because I'm, I'm comfortable.
You know, and again, going through the bullets here for the minutes, you know, I think for the most part, a number of things are covered based on the input from the commission. Occupancy limits, I think that we can kind of mirror a few other cities about that. That'll take care of, again, the hostels, 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 sorry. And take care of the actual, because I think once we figure out the maximum occupancy that you as a commission feel comfortable with, that can establish sort of the on and off-site parking restrictions that are kind of similar to what's laid out in the New Braunfels application as well. The signage, I think, again, the signage should be pretty applicable to what we approve for sort of commercial businesses right now, which is, since I've been here, I think the signage ordinance needs a little more work and teeth in it, because at the end of the day, and some days, I'm actually approving some signs, and, you know, I'm not a sign guy from that standpoint. But like, covered the fees, I know Mr. Herman talked about pool safety. I was trying to look through some cities that reference that, but again, at the end of the day, there is state code to follow. I pulled it up here as far as public safety, pool, yard, enclosures, that kind of spells those out. So if there's anything we want to reference to state code regarding pool safety for, from a public and health standpoint, then we can make sure that owner and operators of a short-term rental are abiding by that if they have a pool. Those seem to be pretty straightforward.
I think we need to-
Commissioners, yeah, no, go ahead.
Sorry, did I interrupt anybody?
No, 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 no.
I think we need to amend, the Castle Hills for some reason has a goofy fence height requirement for aquatic environments to its four and a half feet, which National Aquatic Code in Texas, San Antonio, everybody else is four feet. We have a four and a half foot requirement, minimum fence height requirement, for some odd reason, and no one could tell me why. So I think that's, well, they don't make a four and a half foot fence either, so you have to buy a six-foot board and cut it. But I just think we should definitely, at some point, at least, yeah.
So would you say be conforming more to what the state is utilizing?
Exactly.
So if any changes occur at the state level, we would update and comply?
We should do that now. I mean, our current ordinance is four and a half feet, which everywhere else is, even nationally, it's four, it's four feet.
So I don't think that's in the zoning ordinance. So you're having, announced it this evening, will allow Mr. Rapley to look for that-
Okay.
-and consider a proposed amendment. But again, it's not appropriate for the zoning commission to discuss it, because it's not part of the zoning ordinance which this agenda item is about. But I think we can have Mr. Rapley look into that and make a recommendation to the governing body.
I think, Commissioner, I think the idea, I'm talking to Ms. Baker, sorry, not that I don't feel comfortable, because I think I want to try to make sure we have the best ordinance for our community that's applicable. I've seen other cities similar that have sort of comprehensive planning, and they allude to their comprehensive plans to meet the guidelines of the short-term rental requirements, to make sure it mirrors up and matches. So I know we're, we're in the stages of trying to update our master plan and speak to how we want the community to look. Some of those communities touch on that from an aesthetic standpoint, so.
As a, making, as zoning commission making a recommendation, I think that, you know, again, as the commissioners, my role to help facilitate here, could recommend to move it forward. I still think that tweaks could be made by city council as they see fit, as everything that we send forward as recommendations, they propose that and take action on it appropriately.
Yeah, I agree.
Mr. Baker?
Mr. Schnau, do you have any recommendations on anything else we need to consider in short-term rentals?
No, I think that Mr. Rapley's proposed ordinance does cover the things that I've seen covered in other communities. I didn't see anything in here about requiring the owner to provide a deed, so maybe I missed it. He just handed it to me when he handed it to the members of the zoning commission.
Right here.
So, well, I didn't get a copy of any submittal checklist with what you gave me. It's on the back.
Commissioner Baker, I know you're considering this one, but I think also bundled into this may be the home occupations also too, the red line that you had in there, so I'm not sure what your thoughts were, you know, as the same agenda item, or separate them out as you felt fit, or any other, Commissioner?
I think they should be separated out, but, so as I, as I understand it, we were asking Mr. Rapley to include something about pool safety or reference state codes, something, so that prospective applicants will understand that they do have a burden to secure their pool, and what else? Did we decide about the deed aspect?
We mentioned it in the-
I don't remember, I don't remember what we decided.
Mr. Rapley says that it's in one of the documents, it just didn't happen to be in one of the documents that he gave me.
It's actually in the revised application, in the second page where it says submittal checklist. So this is kind of basic, where you'd kind of have a box to check by the applicant, and staff could also check the box to make sure it's all there before processing the application.
I would love to, I don't know about you guys, but I'd love to see some kind of penalty schedule. You know, people have noise violation, not necessarily like, hey, you do X, Y, or Z, and there's this lengthy list, but I'm just saying like, you know, say we do have a noise ordinance, you were wrenching that earlier, Mr. Schnau, like, we do, Castle Hills has adopted a new noise ordinance, maybe penalties for first-time offenders at this much, you know, may, I don't know, just kind of outlining it, so they know what they're looking at if they break the rules.
No, I think it's great, but being in line with, I think, what was mentioned earlier, is that council would set that, you'd go ahead and recommend it, but his council would set that so that as those fees were updated-
He handed it, yeah.
-it would be updated at the council level.
I don't know if you saw this. Mr. Rodriguez? I was going to let him see it, sorry. Yeah, go right ahead. I've read it already. That's, it's a little general, you know, and that's why I was saying maybe something specific to short-term rentals might be added into that.
So you're proposing that we have this, something like this, general penalties-
Yes.
-attached to the information that we submit or that we give to prospective applicants?
Applicants, yes, ma'am. Just to show them, hey, this is kind of the penalty schedule for not complying with the rules that we're setting forth, you know, and that you're agreeing to abide by in this application. That way they can't say they didn't know, or, you know, they had no idea it was going to be so expensive, you know, that kind of thing. I think it'd be a good practice, but maybe it's just me.
Well, it sounds, Mr. Herman, like the language in the proposed ordinance that just makes reference to Section 1-117 will work fine. I think what you're suggesting is that Mr. Rapley specifically put on the application that the applicant signs some statement about penalty.
That would be-
And I think that would work just fine.
That'd be perfectly fine, yeah.
And I think I did see a city that referenced their section on penalty, so, yeah, it's Chairman, as far as moving forward with this ordinance, I'd see if the commission would like to, obviously the next step would be to recommend and go to council. I don't know if you need the October meeting to kind of put the nail in the coffin on this ordinance before going to council. Or also, as I mentioned, about having some type of public informational meeting for residents to attend to find out about the ordinance, the application, and kind of a Q and A of what other cities have done before they introduce the ordinance before council or before commission. It's something the staff can do and have a meeting, and publicize it appropriately to make sure, and so.
Okay. But that could also be done at a, at a council level as their event-
Well, I think it'll-
-opposed to zoning commission, right?
I think that will help incorporate any input people might have here, who's potentially looking to operate a short-term rental in the community. I think that'll obviously help minimize the public comment once it gets to council as well.
Commissioners?
I agree. I think it's advantageous for us that we hear from the public and give them an opportunity to read what our proposal is going to be. We could still adjust it if we received information or experiences that we hadn't considered. Mr. Rapley, what is our timeframe to have to give notice about, I get, do we have to be final in our, our-
Draft.
-our draft before we do that, or just send a draft and say, subject to further revisions?
I think however the ordinance is, you can recommend to council. I would just need to put out the publication typically, again, going through the express news, I think it's 16 days. So the next council meeting in October, being October 9th, if you wanted, 8, I'm sorry, thank you, Mark. Or if you wanted to have one more meeting by the commission and put it to council in November, that's certainly up to y'all. But typically need about 16 days to put it in the paper for the public hearing. but typically need about 16 days to put it in the paper for the public hearing to go to council.
Commissioners, what are your thoughts on the essence of time, or timelines?
It's cramped.
You're considering, considering advancing forward.
So, I have a question, so if we decide that we would like to move this forward, you know, does that preclude any other revisions, or are you, can you still revise it based on our recommendations and then supply it to council for a vote?
I think, under Mr. Rappley's suggestion, the commission could create what it considers to be the final document, have the public hearing, see if you hear anything at the public hearing that makes you reconsider, and immediately after the public hearing, at the same meeting, say, uh, October, whatever the first Tuesday in October is, um, you could have an agenda item for another public hearing, specific to short-term rentals only, and this proposed ordinance, which could be available on the website as a draft or something like that, or available for someone to pick up at City Hall, then have an action item to finalize the zoning commission's recommendation, and you can, during that final item of action, consider and make modifications based upon what you've heard at the public hearing, or just based upon, you know, further consideration by members of the commission.
Okay.
Um, but, but the idea of having the public hearing is, is something that makes a lot of sense on an ordinance like this, which is different from the tweaks and other changes that, um, uh, the previous zoning commissions have already indicated approval or modification of what came out of the zoning review committee. The last two items were the short-term rental item, which you're currently discussing, and then the final item is the home occupations item, which we'll get to when you finish the short-term rental discussion tonight.
I agree with it, but-
Yeah, it's, uh, but, again, something to think about, we had a public hearing this evening also too, and how many people came. It's, you know, the commissioners, I mean, feel free to, you know, um, I'm hearing, I'm, I guess, um-
You're sensing-
Trying to understand some of the different thought processes here by the commissioners, and, uh, I think everybody brings up some great points, so, um...
I would propose that we ask Mr. Rappley to do another draft that includes pool safety, the information about violation penalties, and, um, anything else that you deem significant and important for us to put in, and then, um, we-
Post-notice, publicly.
Post-notice, and we review it again, and then post-notice, and that looks like mostly November, which is going to be, in my opinion, a horrible timeframe, because you've got Thanksgiving, and then Christmas hits, and the holidays, so... But, um, you know, if this is any idea about the interest, maybe people will be interested in coming and hearing what, what's being said, or at least read about it on the website and show up, so-
Yeah, hopefully.
Um, I think it's important to give them the opportunity to, to tell us what they really want.
Okay, will it even accept a motion if somebody would like to bring one forward in regards to that, then we could move along to home occupation also.
I move that we ask Mr. Rappley to draft, um, one more draft that includes pool safety, um, language about a four-foot fence, add information about violation penalties, and we will review it at our next hearing, and, um, prepare a more formalized proposal to issue to the public, for a public review.
Ms. Baker, the, the four-foot fence isn't in the zoning ordinance.
Okay, so, strike that.
So, if you could strike that.
We strike that.
And then, Mr. Chairman, if you could see if there's a second.
Do I have a second? All in favor? Unanimous? All right, still under this section, we have home occupations. Commissioners, this is your time for open discussion.
And, uh, as Mr. Rappley said, um, the modifications to the home occupations, um, proposed language was my responsibility, um, so I circulated to Mr. Rappley a red line and a clean version that was my attempt to take, um, the act, the recommendations from the commission from the August meeting, and put them in the home occupations draft. The, um, the recommendations included striking the second sentence in 50-427. You'll see that was done, um, in the red line, um, or in the clean version. There was a question about the, um, the commercial vehicles language, um, so in section, subsection six on page two, um, there's language now that says, "Home occupation shall not involve use of commercial vehicles larger than one ton or delivery of materials to and from the premises, other than mail and private delivery service vehicles, such as Federal Express or UPS, between 8:00 a.m. and 7:00 p.m." There was a request to allow limited medical-type use, um, so subsection 10 now begins, "Except for advising or consulting, the home occupation shall not involve, um, things that include medical," except that is in the wrong place, it's supposed to be in number nine. And I don't know how that happened, but that belongs in number nine, um, not in number 10, and I just noticed that right now, and then there's a, uh, addition of the word breeding in the part about animals, so it's no boarding or breeding, and then finally, a new section 14, which talks about registration of home occupations. Those are the recommendations that I picked up from my notes, I think those are the same recommendations that are reflected in the minutes of this meeting that was held in August, and we will, uh, send a corrected version, putting that reference to, except for advising and consulting, um, before sub-nine instead of sub-10 on page two.
Commissioners, any comments?
I think it's pretty much meets all of our prior conversations. I like it.
I agree, as well as some of the minutes and discussions we'd had in the past, under this agenda item, it looks very good. Any other comments, anyone? Now's, uh, now's the time, maybe, uh, we'll accept a motion if someone would like to bring one forward regarding home occupations?
I'll do it if you want.
Do it, you're better at it.
No, I, I, I should, maybe more practiced at doing it incorrectly. I'd like to move that we, um, first I have to find it, that we approve of the revisions to Home Occupations, Division 14, as presented by our city attorney, Mark Schnall.
All in favor? Opposed? Unanimous?
Sorry. We did something.
Thank you. Item number six, adjournment.
Do it.
Yes, have a motion.
I move we adjourn, I don't know, you should do it.
I have a motion to adjourn.
Second?
Second.
All in favor? Thank you.
It's a process. It's a process.